Thank you. It is July 9th. This is the Committee of the Whole, Finance, Administration, and Communication. Call to order. All council members other than Council President Kritzer are here. We have five, six, two, four, seven. And an hour. Seven items on our agenda, and there are some asks. I will note those when we begin, but I think our first is a briefing on 2004 Annual Community Survey Results. And I don't know your name.
Oh, I'm Derek Wing. Hello, council member. Hi, council members. Nice to see you all again. As I mentioned, Derek Wing, Communications Manager, and I'm here to provide some background information about Redmond's annual community survey results, which you'll hear about in a study session in a couple of weeks on July 23rd. As in years past, staff from EMC Research, the company that conducted the study, will present the results of Redmond's annual community survey. It was a survey of residents 18 years old and over in Redmond, Washington, and done as a postcard-to-web survey with a phone option. The survey was conducted from March 14th to April 14th, 2024, and was provided in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Hindi. The most respondents answered in English. The goal is to measure general satisfaction with Redmond City Government Services and residents' priorities for future planning and improvements. EMC Research's presentation will provide you with a full understanding of the results and what they mean, and you will have an opportunity to ask them questions when they present. The cost of the survey was $51,000, approved by council in the city budget. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to hear any questions that you might have that we can assist EMC with in preparation for the study session on the 23rd.
Council members, any preview questions? Councilmember Salahuddin?
Yep. Thank you. I'm really excited to see the survey results. Just a question on the surveys being mailed to about 18,000 households and whether or not, if that is random, or if not, how were those selected? Thank you.
Yeah. So yeah, the survey was, it was sent out to 18,000 households, correct, and that was basically for those who do live in Redmond. So I don't know the answer to that question. EMC Research will be able to provide some more information.
So we can get a fuller answer during the study session?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't see any other hands. I do see a hand. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I always look forward to hearing the results of this. It's our most statistically valid assessment of sentiments in the city. And so, as always, just looking to really call out noteworthy changes since the last survey, especially over the last few years. You know, the world has been experiencing a lot, and folks in Redmond have been experiencing a lot. So I'm looking forward to seeing the results. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have one question. I'm not sure. Oh, yeah, no, I am sure of the question. Will there be any recommendations from city staff at that study session based on the results that we're looking at as to what the city might do, or some ideas about how to react or respond to what we've learned?
Sure, yeah. So EMC Research did provide some members of the executive staff a preview look at that. And so I know that COO Files, as well as myself and Lisa Maher, did get a chance to take a look at things. Not sure if there's going to be any necessarily recommendations, but you know, it's something that can be discussed when EMC Research does come on the 23rd.
Great. I might just email in advance and ask for at least, maybe not suggestions or recommendations, but some sort of insight or commentary from the executive side. Thank you.
Sure.
With that, I think we're good. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Appreciate you being here. And you got the second item?
I do. Yeah, yeah. So I'm going to stick around for a little bit longer, if that's okay. The next item is regarding confirmation for council's outreach opportunities for the remainder of the year. This is something that we chatted about once before, just bringing it up again. You already know about Derby Days. That is coming up this Friday and Saturday, June, July 12th and 13th. Very, very excited to see those of you who are going to be able to make it. I will be there on Saturday morning. And just to thank you in advance for those of you who are participating. I think you may know this, but council has three tables among staff on the porch, which is up here on the stairs right outside of the front of City Hall, where you're going to have a chance to meet with constituents, provide giveaway items, do some trivia questions, and just generally be present at the event. Some council members are also participating in the Derby Days Parade, which goes from 11:00 a.m. to noon. So that'll be exciting. I check in at around 10:00 or 10:30 on Saturday the 13th. Another outreach opportunity that we discussed once before is National Night Out, which is the first Tuesday in August. That is August 6th this year. Police will be taking the lead on signing up neighborhoods. A third opportunity is the Downtown Redmond Art Walk, which takes place on Thursday, September 19th. And Vice President Forsyth, we talked a little bit about the coloring book, the 10-foot-by-10-foot coloring book. I think that that's a great idea. So we will work to make that happen. And then lastly, conversations with council was something that was brought up the last time we chatted. Dates and locations to be determined. When we did last speak, there was talk of trying to do this quarterly, with the first one taking place in Downtown Park in September of 2024. However, with the Downtown Redmond Art Walk happening in September as well, also at a park, I guess the question that I raised to you all is, would trying to do a conversations with council in September be too similar, too soon, too much? So that's something that is potentially worth discussing. We also discussed having conversations with council happening every quarter, and one of them possibly being in January 2025 at the Redmond Senior and Community Center. So today, just wanted to get confirmation from you for participating in these events before we devote time and staff time and budget before executing on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Noava Kamina?
Thank you. Ms. Wing, thank you very much for going through all of that and reminding us. There was one date that was on, in our packet for August 1st, for the tentative date meeting with Bellevue School District and council. So I was wondering if that was still a possibility?
Yeah, definitely something being discussed. I believe COO Files updated council leadership about this meeting last week, and I believe they will be contacting us about a possible October date.
Okay. And then for the September conversations with council, instead of having it in Downtown Redmond, would we, do we feel that we would have enough participation, or if we could move it to Estero Park instead, and have it in the Overlake District instead?
That's a possibility, sure.
And that way, we could still have kind of the two?
Right.
And if there are dates that we know that we're not able to participate, how would you like that communicated?
I think the best thing to do is probably email Deidra, and she can let me know if that works for you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. You beat me to it. I was going to mention that just last week, COO Files let us know that Bellevue reached out, and they said they're looking for a fall date for that meeting now. So the memo is a little outdated on that one. But that conversation is still happening with Bellevue School District and Lake Washington School District. So we're still pushing along and trying to get those meetings to happen. For my personal preference, I am in favor of the January conversation, council conversation. I just, we have a lot of touch points coming up really fast, and I'm excited to participate in those. But I think that having a little more space in between is my personal preference.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Appreciate you being here, Derek. For my part, I'm here and available, looking forward to attending everything, except unfortunately, National Night Out. I have a conflict. I believe, okay, I actually have two questions, because I want to ask a couple of lingering questions about Derby Days. The format of how council's going to be on the porch and separated, it's new. It's a different format. We haven't seen before. And I'm just wondering a little bit more about the vision for that, so that we can understand how to best make use of it. And additionally, I know that we, as a body, have asked a couple of times that the commissioners be included and be invited to be with us. I heard it asked at the end of one of our recent meetings, and it sounded like there were some questions in the air. So where have things landed with the commissioners being invited to participate with the council?
Sure. So to answer your second question, first, commissioners have not been invited to participate in the Derby Days tables up on the porch?
Oh. Can you say more about why that is? Because I think that was the direction of the council.
Sure, yeah. That was something that was discussed and brought up with the executive team as well, and it was decided by the executive team that it would be, I guess, more advantageous to focus on the city council members. And to answer your first question.
Well, I'll just state for the record, I mean, sorry, I'm caught a little off-guard because it was the direction, like, we spoke about it multiple times. So I am caught a little off-guard. So it was the direction of the executive's office not to include the commissioners?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, Lisa.
If I could just support the answer there. I believe this discussion happened with President Kritzer, I don't know Vice President Forsyth, if he was not involved, that the commissioners were being utilized as volunteers in other places in Derby Days, and that there wouldn't be enough time or support to split that amongst the council booth and what the events team was having. That is the explanation I heard from COO Files before she left on vacation.
Okay. I, I'll just say for my part, I think it's amiss. It was, it worked so wonderfully last year to be in partnership with our other, our fellow community leaders. They represent commissions who are studying things that make recommendations to us. So they are subject matter experts in other ways. And unfortunately, I see this as a miss for this particular year. Going back, I guess, to my first question, Derek, did you want to speak more to that?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, so regarding the setup, as you mentioned, it's a little bit different than previous years. This is going to be three different tables that are spread out on the porch, sort of amongst some of the staff tables. And so when you talk about subject matter experts and the opportunity to kind of mix and mingle not only with constituents but also staff, we felt like this was a really good opportunity. The way that we're viewing this is basically having each of the tables be sort of a general table. At one point, there was some discussion about possibly having, you know, a themed table with a specific topic, but then we realized that that might be a little complicated in terms of trying to match, you know, each of the council members who were going to be there at a certain time. And so we decided that it was, it was probably easier to have the tables just be sort of general tables. And if anyone were to ask a specific question to a council member that they might not be able to necessarily answer, there would be staff tables nearby where you could refer them or speak with other staff members.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the conversations with the council, for my part, I'll just say I continue to very enthusiastically support having an event in Downtown Park as soon as possible. The summer is just continuing to wind on. This has been the third summer now that we've been looking forward to this. And I think when it was, when you were last here, we spoke about having them quarterly. Maybe this one downtown, maybe the next one in other places. Downtown Park is, is our town square, in my opinion, and summer is just a perfect time, and it's got so many great arrangements there. So I very much continue to be in favor of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Others? Questions? Council Vice President Forsyth, you had your hand up, and then I went down.
I was just going to share what Lisa shared about the commissioners being volunteered at other locations throughout Derby Days.
Great, thank you. So I have one quick comment. The council conversations, I'm in, I'm in huge support of these kinds of events, the Derby Days, going National Night Out, having those one-on-one conversations. But as I said when this topic first came up, I think it's really important that we have a formal conversation, council conversation, set up where people can actually ask questions and their neighbors can hear the questions. So I look forward to some time where we can have that type of conversation. And I don't necessarily see it on the schedule. I'm not degrading or saying it's better than meeting people at the parks. I think it's important. But I think it's very important. It's long overdue. We haven't done it in years. And there is a lot of feelings and thoughts out there about city government right now. And I think it's time that we address it, and that is the best way to address it. And if we're going to regain our credibility and the confidence of those people who don't feel it right now, that is our way to do it. So, thank you. Anything else? You were great. Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Appreciate it, both of you. Moving on to item three, I think we have, I hear behind me, this presentation of the Salary Commission candidates. And Director Laird, hello.
All right. So it's nice to see you all here today on this very hot day. So I'm Catherine Laird, your HR Director, as you know. And I'm here today to review the Salary Commission candidate selection process. And I'm seeking your approval to confirm council, during the council consent on July 16th, the seven identified candidates selected to make up the salary commission. So in regards to the selection process, there were eight candidates that applied, and all eight were interviewed by me and Bob Sterbank, who is an attorney with Foster Garvey. And Bob will be staffing the salary commission with me. And then a second interview was conducted by Mayor Bernie and Chief Operating Officer Melissa Files. The mayor selected seven candidates based upon meeting the desired qualifications. Of course, there's only seven positions that are available. All of the seven candidates accepted the offer to move forward in the process. The seven candidates are listed on your FAC agenda memo, and you should have received the printed application materials in your council packet. Once the candidates are confirmed on July 16th, all seven will be sworn in, and the salary commission's first meeting will convene on August 1st. And we will meet every other Thursday thereafter until a decision is reached. All seven candidates have committed to participating fully in the process. And again, what I'm seeking is your approval tonight to confirm the seven candidates selected by the mayor for the salary commission to be added to the July 16th council consent agenda. Thank you.
Council members, questions? I saw hands start to go up, and then I saw one go up for sure. Councilmember Salahuddin?
Yep, thank you. We'll point out the obvious. I'm sure that all of them are great candidates. I believe there are no women that are on the commission. Could you run us through sort of the outreach process? And I know that there were only eight applicants, but what we did to sort of advertise to a broader scale?
Right. We did a press release, of course. And then we also did a direct emailing of 43 to 43 people, which included females. So we can only get so many people to apply. So we did not select anybody out because of gender, yeah.
Councilmember Forsyth?
Thank you. Yeah, I have the similar concern that Councilmember Salahuddin raised about the diversity of gender on our, on the recommendation here. I also have concerns because there are applicants here who came and spoke against the last salary commission, and I'm concerned about their ability to remain neutral throughout the process. It's a big ask that we're having them undertake, and remaining independent, as this is an independent salary commission, is a huge part of this. And I just, I have trepidations about that ability. I'm also, I was, I remember being told, council leadership was told there were nine applicants, and I don't know if that was just misspoken, or...
Yeah, we thought there were nine, but one did not provide materials. So we thought that person was going to apply, and they never did.
Okay. And then I didn't see any additional materials. I just see what's in the memo. I don't know if there was more that we were supposed to receive, and we did not.
So we had provided printed copies of all of the application materials to the executive liaison, or to the council liaison. So it doesn't appear that you had received it.
We've not received any of that information.
Okay. I'll make sure that you get a copy of those.
Okay, great. And then I'm also interested to know if any of these folks are renters, because there's a lot of, if you bought your home in the 80s, your mortgage payment is way less than what the average rent is today in the city. And since we are 50% renters, I feel like that's a good factor into what the decisions that we'll be making, this commission will be making as well. So I just, I'm not ready to put this on consent. We don't have all the materials. I have questions about the general slate in front of us, and I don't feel like I have enough information to move forward.
Other questions? Councilmember Stewart, I believe?
Sure, thanks. I'll go ahead and ask three questions for due diligence. And again, the materials were not included, so we, we will have to see those in order to do our due diligence. But three questions. Are all of the available, all of the candidates in this slate available to do the work on the schedule proposed?
Yes, they are available. We confirm that.
And does the commission expect to have quorum regularly in this slate?
Well, we had asked them to make sure that they could participate, starting August 1st, and then meeting every other Thursday thereafter. So they are aware of it. We got a verbal confirmation from everybody.
You did your best, is what I...
We did our best, yes.
Okay. And then will the slate be required to complete their Open Public Meeting Act training prior to the first meeting?
Yes, we have asked them to do that, and they all committed to doing that as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Noava Kamina?
I've got nothing new to add, because my council members have, or other council members have already spoken up on the concerns that I had around gender diversity, around renters. We've got several in here that were highly involved in the city at a different time. I definitely need to see the rest of the materials, concerns about, can they be unbiased and objective in it?
I would like to comment about the being objective, is when we interviewed them, we wanted to make sure that they could do that, and if they knew what had happened before. And so we really talked to them about the importance of being objective. And again, they all confirmed that they could. So we felt very strongly that they were very authentic in their responses. So we don't, we don't feel like we've tried to stack it or anything to try to get those that would not be objective. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Because we can't control them.
And thank you for sharing that. But my comment was really just that it was on the record of where I stand and what my concerns were with it. But I deeply, deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to ask one more question. So we have been talking a lot as a city about our actions to become more equitable. And I, as you described, the outreach process for this particular volunteer opportunity, you know, sometimes if we want a different outcome, we have to do things differently. And so I understand there were outreach opportunities. But I wondered if going back out, specifically encouraging female candidates to apply to the salary commission, is something that the city would be willing to consider to address the concerns of the council?
Thank you, council. So I'm going to echo some of what I've heard. This, I appreciate your candor in saying, or explaining that this was not stacked. It does strike me as difficult when you have two former council members and a former planning commissioner, all very personally associated with the mayor, to be honest with you. And so I'm, I'm not saying that it's not a coincidence. I'm saying that the thoughts that I have, I share with my council members, I would like to understand the process, who we missed, how we missed them, and is there something that we can do to get a broader, more breadth into something as important as setting our salaries? So I don't think we're ready for consent agenda. And I look forward to you bringing it back to either another committee, or however you want to bring it back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that happy note, we'll move... Oh, Councilmember Forsyth?
Thanks. I would be in support of Councilmember Stewart's idea of potentially, you know, casting a wider net and seeking more applicants just to make the general makeup a bit more equitable.
Great. So moving on, I think you're here for the next one as well?
Yes.
It's the process for, oh, the next two.
That's right.
We're processing updating council benefits and the mayor's salary. Is this one item or two?
It's, it's kind of one item, but it's broken into two separate. So I'll start with the mayor's salary discussion, and then we can move to council benefits. So again, Catherine Laird, HR Director, I'm here to talk about finishing your discussion that you had regarding the mayor's salary and council benefits after the June 25th study session. And I'm seeking your final approval today, or final decision today on the mayor's salary and council benefits, so we can move to council consent next week on July 16th. So the question did come up, and I knew that it probably would, is why move to council consent to July 16th instead of in November for the January 1st, 2025 effective date? So during the June 25th study session, the majority of council members were comfortable with increase in the mayor's salary based upon what was agreed upon in 2024. So that agreement, had it gone through, would have had an effective date of January 1st, 2024. So did I say '23? So it was what you agreed upon, or what council agreed upon in '23, to have an effective date of January 1st of 2024. So we were prepared at that time to make any changes, and the funds had been budgeted. So there's, there's no concern with that. And so the recommendation is to make it effective July 16th of this year, but not have it be retroactive to January 1st of '24. This suggests, this, let's see. Okay, so adjusting the mayor's salary in 2024 does continue to allow it to be in alignment with current market. And if the council approves a COLA for January 1st of 2025, that alignment will also continue. And quite honestly, it is the right thing to do for the mayor, given that there has been no salary increase since 2020. And the process to update the mayor's salary is very different from the process to update council's salary. So decisions on the mayor's salary should be independent from the work of the salary commission. And as council considers their salary that has not been updated since 2019, staff also strongly feels that your salary should be increased or looked at as well. And so we will be working with the salary commission once that commission is in place on that process. And then finally, council benefit changes in '24 are also doable for staff to administer, and is the right thing to do for council. And so we would recommend that council benefit changes also occur in 2024. And then we'll talk about the council benefits in just a minute. As far as the mayor's base salary, so just as a reminder, the mayor's base salary currently is $145,000, and was last updated on January 1st, 2020. So in summary, of the preference of what council had stated in the June 25th study session, five council members were okay with what was discussed last year, which was to move the salary to $170,000 effective 1/124. In fact, actually, there's six council members as well. We're comfortable with that. Five council members indicated that they were okay with COLA, but making sure that, two council members wanted to make sure that, that the council could... two council members wanted to make sure that, that the council could monitor or regularly evaluate any kind of COLA increases, which council can do through the process. When we move forward with the new pay plan at the end of the year, council has to approve that. And then four council members wanted to keep the car allowance at $500 a month, so there's no change or no recommended change in the car allowance. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Fields.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Just a timing question. Is there anything in the way from council adding a COLA now and/or addressing council benefits now?
To address council benefits? I say, okay, so I say that again?
So the portion about the COLA for the mayor's salary?
Mm-hmm.
It's the same question for both the COLA for the mayor's salary and the benefits for council. Is there anything in the way today for us to take action immediately as opposed to delay the start date to January 1?
Yeah, you could do that.
And we can?
If you wanted to add COLA to the mayor's salary now, is that what you're saying?
Correct. So we could, we can adjust the mayor's current base salary at 145 with a COLA adjustment now.
If that's what the council wants to do, the council can do that.
And then later also do a base salary adjustment starting in 2024.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. I mean, it is 2024, 2025.
25, I know.
Councilmember, council vice president Forsythe.
Thank you. So I'm a little confused by the, the current proposal. I feel like it's different from where we left off last time. It was my understanding that when we left off at that study session, we were going to, we had, the majority had, had discussed, we liked where council landed last time with the 170 and that was going to start January 1st, 2025. Now the proposal is that it starts July 16th. Is that correct?
That's recommendation, yes. Mm-hmm.
And I'm also confused between if we're starting at 170, which is my preference, or if we're starting at the 175.
The 170, which is what council had approved in '23.
Okay. So I'm, I'm good to start with the 170 as we had previously discussed. I don't know how I feel about starting in July versus starting in January just yet. And I had one other, and now I'm blanking. I will come back to it. Go ahead.
Councilmember Anderson.
I see Director Laird is typing, so I will wait.
It's okay.
My question would be if there is a way to do back pay or retro to January 1, 2024, if we were to adjust COLA as a single decision?
Yes, you could retro that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
I got a little overconfident, I apologize. Thank you, and I appreciate the, the thinking from councilmember Anderson, but I do feel like as a, as a body, we have been working toward this number that's closer to 170. That's the number I continue to feel comfortable with. There has been benign neglect of this salary and adjusting it now to this number and then adding in that cost of living adjustment puts this on maintenance mode and makes it a lot less work for the future and, and quite frankly, to have a lot less angst associated with it. I do want to push back that some of the materials that were provided via email to the council suggested that this number of 170,000 was randomly chosen by the council, was the word used. Unfortunately, I very much disagree with that assessment. We are, we have discussed many times the willingness to increase the several, the salary by several tens of thousands, but, but not the staff recommendation of 70,000. And one is no more random than the other. This is a conversation and a process that we've been taking deliberate care with. So I continue to be okay with that. I think one of the things I've said from the very beginning on all of the salaries is that they should just be tied to the budget. So I am more in favor of having this continue on its original timeline at the end of the year. Thank you.
So I guess I would ask the council for, to begin with, is this, will this, can this, can this be ready for consent agenda in a week? A week, right?
Yes, next Tuesday.
Is there, is there a path forward to do that that anybody is comfortable with or not comfortable with? Councilmember Anderson.
If it were not clear, I am comfortable adding a COLA benefit for the year of 2024. I like the idea of starting a new salary, base salary at the beginning of January 2025. If we are, I would even tie it to a successful completion of council salary update as well. That's sort of the, what's on the table at the moment.
So if I understood this right, and I won't, well, I will call it a stopgap measure because that's kind of what it is. So you're, you're attempting to remedy an unfairness that was presented to us. It hasn't been X many years. This would get us to 2025, allow us to complete the work. And then, once the successful completion of council salary, then we can do it all as one. And that also is consistent with councilmember Stewart tying it to the budget. Is that a fairly fair assessment?
That's a fair assessment. Nice work.
Thanks. Councilmember Forsythe.
I support that proposal.
Any, I see a thumb up. I see a blank stare. Sorry.
Not a blank stare, a question mark, because there was a conversation on council that predated me coming on that sounds like there was an, an agreement that for whatever reason did not move forward. That was for the mayor's salary. So there was agreement, it didn't move forward, but it was in, already baked into the budget. Is that accurate for right now?
I'm not sure about the budget. We'd have to find out. But the first part of what you said, my memory, my recollection is we did have a council consent, an agreement on moving forward and that it, because of the, the things that happened on the, the progress not being made on council salary, we had talked about tying those things together in the same way we're doing tonight. And since that got upended, then everything got upended. Fair? Councilmember Stewart.
Just for, I, I understand that this may not be the will of the body, but just to restate, for me, I'm uncomfortable linking the two, the, the mayor's salary and then the commission together. They are independent processes wholly and entirely. The only thing in my mind that links them at the end of the day is the budget. So I understand if maybe there's some other sentiment, but I just wanted to restate my opinion for the record. Thanks.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Stewart. And I don't know that anyone's saying that they're linked, certainly not technically linked, but in the spirit of getting it all done and finding equity for elected positions, I think that's really the link. So that's a bit informal, but handling all of the elected decisions about salary and benefits at one time is a, is a desire on some of us on council, so. Councilmember Noava Kamina.
Since they've not been linked before, I'd like to explore and have input on if we link it now, what precedence are we setting moving forward? And is that, I'm looking for what might be unintended consequences.
That's a great question. I don't know the answer. Councilmember Anderson.
Unfortunately, you and I are the oldest female here.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that last time we did it, it ended up being at the same time. So it may not have been intentional on Director Laird. I don't even know if you were here at the time, but we, we did agree and then there was action taken for council separately, but at the same time. So the timing was not an issue previously, unprecedented, I guess, last time. So this is where I would say that's a great question and perhaps what we can look at when the legislation comes forward for us is how do you fix that going forward? If you have ideas, I'd be happy to hear what those could be. But if, if there's sentiment about not timing them and keeping them independent, one of the things that you could do is put the mayor's salary underneath the Salary Commission and takes it off council entirely as a bargaining chip between us and the mayor. When there's a ginormous salary imbalance, it kind of gives us a little bit of pushback on things that the mayor is doing or not doing. And that's kind of why I think, that's why it's a sort of a political tool for us. I'm not supposed to tell everybody the answers, but it's kind of, so go ahead.
I will call on myself. I, I appreciate what councilmember Anderson just said. I think it's, it's important, yes, that I don't know that we want to formally link them because they are completely different decision-making processes. But I do recognize the value of getting those kinds of decisions made at the same time because they're each, there is influence. There is influence from the mayor's office, there is influence from council. And, you know, the reality is we're looking for equity, we're looking for fairness, and we're looking for compensation that meets the needs of the city and the people at Redmond. And it's, in their minds, it's a package deal. So that's my thoughts. Councilmember Forsythe. Councilmember Anderson.
Somebody had a question about the, was it, excuse me, councilmember Silhoudin, the, the amount of salary. The last week's budget presentation from Director Cochran had the amounts that were budgeted for our salary increases. So the answer to that question is the staff, I believe, was anticipating raises for all electeds in the last 2023, 2024 budget. Those numbers are available to us to inspect.
Councilmember Forsythe.
Thank you, and thank you for pointing that out. I still find that process challenging and, and that there's a predetermined, it appears there's a predetermined amount already in the budget that, I will say, I had heard from former salary commissioners that they were being led to that decision. So that's why I have concerns about the independence of, of the commission. And I hope Director Laird will fight as hard as she is for the mayor's salary for our salary when it comes to that point. But to go back to the conversation around these being linked, I think the better way to look at it as they, in the code, are addressed that they will occur at the same time. So while they are not linked, they are a parallel path. And I think logically that makes a lot of sense to have those parallel tracks happening at the same time. So this would actually be the first time that we would be kind of making those out of sync as far as a historical context and, and from, from my historical reading of the processes. Additionally, I want to point out that the mayor's salary did used to be under the Salary Commission and a number of years ago it was removed and that was given to the council to make that decision. So I do think that there is some merit to having these conversations and seeing if that's still the trajectory that we want to go or not. So we do have a lot that we can decide in this moment, in this opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Going back to councilmember Noava Kamina's question about linking the two, that's a decision that we this term actually made together. So sometimes we forget our own decisions and it happens a lot in this part-time role that we have. But I will go ahead and read from the code, section 2.38.010, which we amended with ordinance 3166 in May 2024, so that the Redmond City Council shall review the mayor's salary and benefits compensation every even year. The city council shall reach a decision on any adjustments in the mayor's salary and benefit compensation in time to incorporate in the biennial budget. So that's a decision we collectively already made this term.
Thank you, councilmember. So Director Laird, let me ask you this. I don't think, I, I don't get a sense that we can take your staff's recommendation, put it on consent at this time. What we could do, if council leadership is willing, either put it on the July 16th or the August, I'm not sure what the date is, 5th, as a new, as a new business item. And that would give us time to gather information and be prepared, hopefully be prepared to actually make decision on both of these issues. I am looking to council to see if that would be good. Councilmember Forsythe.
So given the proposal that councilmember Anderson put forward, I'd be interested to see what the COLA amount would be for the 2024 adjustment. Curious if there's room on an upcoming committee of the whole that we could talk that out and have that more broad conversation to then move it to the August 5th potential meeting.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Anderson.
If the whole, whole package were provided next week for consent, we are also able to pull or put it on new business and also divide that motion and delay. So that is one option to get out of staff's way on this one if it is completed and ready for proposal. I'm also interested in the amount for COLA and I'd be happy to get that on email.
Yeah, and I think that was actually the other option. That is a path forward. And at that time, if we pull it from the consent and move it to new business and then still can't resolve it during new business, we can then put a time specific for the future. So that keeps it moving forward. It takes a lighter load on staff to come up with multiple options and helps us sort of collaborate back and forth between what we're thinking and what you know. Councilmember Stewart.
I'm in no rush to see this item moved because again, I want to tie it to the budget. I realize I'm repeating myself. But I would, I would, I would prefer we make a decision by, say, the end of the summer so that as we get deeper into budgeting season, this is just, the decision itself is just baked. I would much rather make that decision here in a, in a committee where we're able to have the conversation aired that we need to have rather than in the middle of a business meeting where the mayor would have to turn over the meeting probably to the council president to lead the, it would, you know, in the meeting with, with the mayor. I just question the dynamics there in terms of, of the body and how it wants to do its work.
So my, my concern is that we, we have a very busy schedule coming up and we're out for two weeks in August and then we're very much heavy into the budget process. Postponing decisions on this, I have a concern that they will distract from some of the other really critical work that we're doing. I'm not disagreeing with you, councilmember Stewart. I'm just offering another side to this, that the more we don't make decisions that are in front of us, the difficult, more difficult it becomes to find time. Councilmember Silhoudin.
Thank you. And in just responding to that, the next committee of the whole would be Public Safety and Human Services, which before, prior to our check-in meeting tomorrow, we have nine items that were, yeah, suggested. So that's the same day as the business meeting. So moving forward would be, I, I think councilmember Anderson's proposal was, was good.
Did you just say case in point? Councilmember Anderson. So do we want to do, do this, what was it, a stopgap measure? So do we have a thumbs up, thumbs down on making a decision at the next business meeting on COLA adjustments to date? So any discussion before the thumbs up? Councilmember Forsythe.
Sorry, it was unclear if that was going to be a retroactive COLA or a COLA moving forward on the 45, 145. So I think we need to clarify that.
I believe it was retroactive from the 145.
I did not specifically propose that. It doesn't really matter. It doesn't really matter. People should get a COLA raise, so that's when it can be decided. And I think that's a great question. If we were to say COLA starts immediately, then the first paycheck after that would be adjusted, so, thank you.
So I feel like I'm standing on a very unsteady ladder right now. Any suggestions from Director Laird on a process forward?
So I think your discussion is very helpful. If you're not comfortable moving forward with making a decision on a salary adjustment, a total salary adjustment, I think the COLA is a great idea. And I would make that retroactive to January 1st of 2024 because it was, the $170,000 was already budgeted, so we were prepared to pay for that anyway. And obviously, COLA, and I can't remember, I think, I can't remember it, so, because I don't want to say the wrong number, it won't come near $170,000 for retroacting it, doing a retroactive COLA to 1124. Does that make sense? So if you take COLA on a salary of $145,000, whatever the COLA was, that won't come, that won't equal $170,000.
Okay. I understand. So, anybody have a great idea here? Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks so much. I think we should bring the COLA calculation back to this very committee next month and then adopt it at our following business meeting, which is probably the first one of September. But if it's retroactive for the year, it'll be, it'll all work out. And then in terms of the, maybe we could also have a touch base, again, here in this committee in August on the overall salary package, again, so that that's baked and we can move on to our other work of the fall.
Thumbs up, thumbs down on that idea? I see mostly thumbs up, yeah, okay. I think you have something from the council.
Okay. So just to confirm, so bring this back at the next FAC in August with the COLA amount, no business meeting then, and then look to add it to consent. Would it be possible to come to a different committee of the whole in July and then add it to consent for August 2nd, whatever that business meeting is?
I, Councilmember Forsythe.
Well, as Councilmember Stewart pointed out, if it's retroactive, it's...
It doesn't matter.
Here nor there. I understand wanting to get it off your plate, so that's something to be considered. But as Councilmember Salahuddin mentioned, his committee is the next one, and it already has nine items. So we'd have to see what's on, I think it's Councilmember Stewart's meeting, sorry.
Yeah.
We changed them all up, so I still don't have that rhythm down. So we don't know what's on Councilmember Nueva Camina's committee yet and if that's too full. But if it is retroactive, I'm kind of okay with, like, just waiting until that August meeting.
Okay. Yeah, me too. I'm good with the proposal from Councilmember Stewart.
So is that just the decision then? So we'll do FAC in August and then the first business meeting in September for consent?
Correct.
Is that, okay. And that's for the mayor's salary and council benefits, or do we still want to talk about council benefits?
Councilmember Forsythe.
I still want to talk about council benefits. I had a little more time to think about it and reviewing the other cities that have a transportation stipend. I'd be interested to see us be inclusive on that as well. Just thinking back on the amount of times that I have driven to meetings, driven to conventions and that sort of thing, and my own, this is to my own detriment, not turning in receipts for mileage. I think having that built in, a little bit of stipend like other cities are reflecting is a more equitable way to go about this. And knowing that even when we do go on, go to conventions and have to do that reimbursement, there's many times when it's like three months before we see those reimbursements take place. So having that extra little bit of assistance, I think, is, in my opinion, the way to go for future councils as well.
Councilmember Forsythe, do you have an amount that you would propose?
I do not. I know that it currently is in there at 282 at a lot of other councils, but I'm okay going lower than that, but I don't have a particular amount in mind, maybe 150, 200.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks. I think we actually didn't hear the introduction of the staff recommendation from Director Laird. And just for the viewing public's sake, and in answer to Director Laird's question, do we want to talk about this, I will continue to just state that I think this should all be tied to the budget, so it should be effective with the new budget.
So are there, do you want to introduce the item real quick?
Yes, I can do that. Okay, so just a recap of staff's recommendation, which is what we had discussed last time during the June 25th study session. So effective immediately after council consent, because we're looking to do council consent on July 16th. Health benefits, the premium for health benefits for the council members would be the individual coverage paid for by the city. And premiums for dependents would be the same as currently being paid by council members. And then for, and then a monthly stipend of $300 to be used for any expenses that the council wants to use, either supplemental or additional expenses, to be used at council discretion. And we had talked about that, you know, you can contribute to an FSA using the funds from the stipend if you want. You can use the FSA for dependent care with some IRS restrictions. We can talk more about that if you want. You can donate some or all of the $300 stipend to local programs, but that is something that would be your decision and be done by yourself. You would do that, it's not through payroll deductions. And again, HR staff and some council members had indicated and raised concerns about monitoring low-income status for other council members. So we feel that that would be pretty intrusive if we were to do that, would prefer not to do that. And the stipend provides maximum flexibility to address various circumstances, including potentially the car traveling reimbursements and stuff like that that you're talking about if you wanted to use that for that.
Comments and questions from council on the introduced item? I see no hands. I'm going to say that I support this recommendation as it is. I think that the Budget Office could, I'm sorry, the Budget Office, the Budget Process could be an opportunity to talk about reimbursement for mileage for council members as a separate item. Part of the reason I think it should be separate is because there is an agency called the IRS that looks for documentation on certain things, especially mileage and travel. So I do see them as separate, and maybe there is a process we could come up with that would make it not as onerous for council members to turn in their mileage. But as that would, in my mind, that's a separate item, and I am in support of the proposal as presented at this committee meeting. Councilmember Forsythe.
I will read, Council Vice President Kritzer sent me an email with her thoughts on this topic, and I will read that now. Just sharing that she appreciates the info on health benefits for all types of employees. I'd like to consider having the council member plus child rate be a little lower, perhaps aligned to the 22, 27 hourly rates for employees. I'm not in support of the forced FSA, I support the flexible stipend.
So we have a recommendation from staff, we have one council member that supports it. What are the other council members recommend? Councilmember Anderson.
A follow-up question on, by the way, Director Laird, you're doing a great job handling this with us, thank you. It's got a lot of juggling. The question I have regarding the FSA and flexible stipend, there may be some, I say I would be concerned there that it may not be possible to do both without like a cafeteria plan or something like that. So keep an eye out for that. And I have no feelings one way or another on the amount. The only one I have is that I would prefer to have this also done because the amount was also budgeted for us this year. So given that we tend, we could be self-sabotaging ourselves, we may as well, if we can afford to pay for the benefits, get those enacted immediately, although health benefit would not be enrollment necessarily immediately. So I don't see any reason we wouldn't put this on the same item as a COLA adjustment for the mayor.
Other council members. Can I just ask a question of my colleagues? Do you need more information, or you... Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I continue to be excited about the opportunity here to impact the barriers that exist to serving on this council in our community and how we might be able to use expanded benefits for certain groups to help encourage more folks to be able to step up to serve their city. So earlier today, I sent the council, and I know what it's like to get a Tuesday afternoon email, so I'm just going to reference this email to the council. And if you have an interest in exploring this further, I can pull it up on the screen. But I did speak with council members in a couple different cities who do more targeted stipending around childcare and housing. And I sent the council the example from the city of Kirkland, which offers a childcare stipend for council members who have children under the age of 10 or dependent children with special needs up to age 18, as well as a household income, a housing stipend, rather, based on housing income. I understand that the staff shared with us the concern around needing to check on salary and disclosures. We, as council members, if the public don't know, we already have to report our financial affair disclosures every year. They're due on the same day as tax day, so much of this information's already known. In the city of Issaquah, their targeted stipend is, it's pretty, it's a little bit like the honor system in the sense that it's a self-affidavit to disclose what your salary is and what benefit you qualify for. So if there is a pool of money available for additional stipends for the council, I'm more in favor of targeting that to reducing barriers to serving on the council. If the council has interest in that, I will, I can pull up the Kirkland example, and we can look at it together. If the body is more in favor of a stipend that is being proposed by the staff, I probably will not support the vote. So we can either, I can either pull it from consent or just have it on new business or something like that. But I'm just not super comfortable with missing this opportunity to reduce barriers. Thanks.
Councilmember Salahuddin.
Yep, thank you. So I would be in favor of staff recommendation. I know that we do report the, I believe it's the F1, every single year, and that it, to my knowledge, if I'm remembering correctly, is a threshold that you have to report within a certain range, and that's a fairly large range. And getting down to the nitty-gritty of the specific or even a more narrow range of salary does open us up to, in my opinion, having folks be a little bit more targeted when it comes to their salary. And although we mean well, we would mean well with, you know, the recommendations, and I, Councilmember Stewart, I really appreciate you sharing, you know, what Kirkland does and seeing their household incomes and childcare rates. I am wary of that, so I do appreciate staff's recommendation and would move forward with that.
Councilmember Forsythe.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Salahuddin on that one. I still support the stipend, the flexible stipend. I will be a little vulnerable here and share that the F1 can be very misleading. If you at any point need to become the power of attorney for any of your family members, you have to report that income that you are on their bank account as your own. So I will share that I am that for many of my family members, and it looks a lot better than is actual reality. So I still definitely support the proposed recommendation from staff on this. If we want to have a conversation about transportation, great. If not, let's just move forward.
So I will add another comment, and I agree with both of my colleagues who recently spoke. I'm concerned about targeted barriers. I think that we should do everything we can to make this position available to everybody, no matter what their circumstances. And circumstances vary greatly out there, trust me. There are all kinds of barriers to serving on something like a city council. Childcare is, in fact, a difficult one, but there are others. So I'm concerned that we, in our targeting, we may look to some extent like we're trying to bias our elections, and that, I am concerned about that. I recognize that, you know, an argument can be made that they're already biased, but trying to fix it with things that don't necessarily result in equity, I'm very concerned about. So I like the idea of a stipend, I like the idea of it not being, it being used for multiple reasons. And I really don't think that many people who have a super amount of wealth want to serve on city council, and the $300 would be pocket change to them. So I don't think it's really that much of an issue. So that's where I'm at, and that's three, as far as I can count, that think this should go to consent, and one that doesn't. So, that being said, Councilmember Stewart.
Mr. Fields, you actually had four because of the statement from President Kritzer that Council Vice President...
Oh, thank you. So we have four for consent, one not. One not means this is new business. New business.
So, new business?
Yes. Then whenever council leadership and the mayor can work out a schedule.
So it's in the memo as July 16th?
Yeah. So are we moving to consent for July 16th or moving to business?
Well...
I'm sorry.
When one council member says to me, as council chair, they don't want it on consent, that means it's not consent. So that means it defaults to either new business or another day. So it's not consent in my mind. It's new business.
Oh, because not everybody has consented.
Correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Fields, what would you like me to do?
New business, July 16th.
New business, July 16th?
Correct.
That further discussion. Is that right?
To make a decision.
To make a decision, okay. Is there anything you want, just further the discussion, is all, do you want me to...
I think as you've proposed, will be a new business item, and council can then do whatever they do.
Okay, got it.
Right? Thank you. And I really am sorry that we've taken that much time, but I do believe that these are important items, so I appreciate your patience and your insight. So thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I think we need to extend the time of this meeting. Is there a motion for another 20 minutes or less?
No, there's no hard stop.
There's no hard stop, you're right. We don't need a motion. Hello, Director.
Hello. It's hot in here.
Welcome to the monkey house. I've lost track of what the next item is. Hala.
So the next three items are mine. The first is just our budget process update. What we're planning on updating you on today is our staff results team processes that are going on this week, so we're busy doing that. Before we get started, I did want to just provide you with a couple of reminders. Study session tonight, we are covering both our capital investment program as well as our business technology program. There is one slide in the business technology improvement program presentation that has been replaced by our TIS department, and I will send you those new slides before we... by our TIS department, and I will send you those new slides before this evening and let you know which slide it is. The other is that it's been a hard day at the city just internally. Director Hamilton will not be with us this evening, and Director Bird and I will do our best to cover her materials. And whatever we are not able to answer for you, we will provide either at the next committee meeting that she can attend, or as soon as we can get that information to you. But otherwise, we should be running smoothly. So this week, we have both our Staff Results Team process and our Civics Results Team process going on to support the budget. Our Staff Results Team process is very much geared towards the evaluation, prioritization, feedback, hopefully growth in a plan that is being presented to them. So Director's team has put together some preliminary ideas for the budget, and it's going to that team for some consideration and hopefully to elevate it even more. And Haritha will provide you with the details of how we're walking that group through the process. We are also going through our Civics Results Team process this week. This process is planned around the four action plans that are being brought forward to support the budgeting for equity strategic element that we're adding to the budget. For that, for the Civics Results Team process, we have three sessions. One is an internal session with our Welcoming Committee that have been just so invested in DEI types of issues since the, since the city really kicked off, a focused area on that. That was a great session, a lot of fun, lot of thoughts there that are greatly appreciated. We have two external sessions focused, are scheduled, excuse me, for Thursday, one in the afternoon to capture those folks that could join us then, as well as one in the evening. It is not only just a collection of input on their advice regarding the action plans that have been put in front of them, but it is a development of where we go next. We started off our budgeting for equity journey sort of lightly, really picking on areas that we knew we could add value to quickly. And we need to figure out where do we go next. And that, to me, needs to be very much driven by those that we serve. So a community conversation about that to get us kicked off will be great. We have Jan Harrison with us this afternoon to share her thoughts and observations as she's been working with us, not only with the staff to help develop their action plans, but also help us to put together a plan for facilitation to make sure that we really tease out the elements that are important to us. So just looking for some quick observations from Jan today of what she's observed, what she's hopeful for of, on Thursday, and then we'll turn to Haritha to provide us with what she's up to.
Oh, am I going first?
You can.
Good evening, good afternoon, and it's great to be here. Really excited to, that the city is taking budgeting for equity seriously. Applaud Kelly in her efforts to, in leading this, and how we are weaving it into our DEI strategic plan. And so budgeting for equity basically is looking at, for example, cities such as Redmond, which is quite affluent, and looking at the disparities, and leaning into how we chose them. We looked at healthy and sustainability, and that is looking at language access services during business technical assistant visits, salient and safe and resilient mass communication during emergency incidents, strategic and responsive, real-time language translation services, and vibrant and connected mobility and multimodal facility ADA concerns. And just broadly, briefly, it, being able to approach budgeting for equity within these parameters is really quite exciting. And yesterday, we had a very robust discussion utilizing the Welcoming Redmond team as a resource, as a touch base, as a source of suggestions and recommendations was quite useful. So we're tweaking out those, tweaking it out as we fine tune it and prepare for our sessions on Thursday. Any questions?
Questions from Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Just had a question on the Civic Results Team process. Is that done in public meetings?
Yeah, it's going to be, yes, it's going to be the option of in-person and virtual and open to the public.
Are we allowed to attend those?
Yes.
Okay. My question was, how can council members get the details of what's specifically said, and the reason is because it's very challenging to avoid making assumptions and inserting bias without specific context for what's said, to whom and to when and about when?
Can you break that down? Because that was, that was a lot.
Oh, just giving the reason for why I was asking that. So the, yeah, just, so we can attend those, or will we get a transcript of that, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Harrison? I have one. I asked you this a year ago.
Okay.
You were sort of new.
Yes. I'm a bit more seasoned now. I'm going on six, what is it, a year and five months, so seven, you know, 17 months?
Will you, here's the question. Will you be reviewing some of the proposals that are tied to DEI prior to them coming to council and weigh in with your opinions about that actually addresses an ADA issue or that addresses, will you be part of that consulting team?
Yes. And actually, I have initially, in collaborating with Kelly, the Director of Finance, as I said, it's, I feel very fortunate in terms of being here and having such a collaborative, responsive leadership through the Director's team. So it's, I think it's a great fit, a great fit in terms of how I do this work, meaning that it's a lot of heavy lifting and too much and too onerous for someone to do it on its own, and it has to be anchored in collaboration. And so Kelly's been a great collaborator.
Perfect, great. No, Anne, I appreciate that. Thank you. And by the way, when the budget comes around, I'll be saying, did Ms. Harrison look at that?
Yeah, and I, and I will be able to say, yes, I did.
Okay, great. Thanks. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I'm interested to hear how it goes with the new format with the Civics Results Teams. I have gotten some feedback that it is different than it has, from the members of the public, that it's going to be different than it's been in the past. So I'm curious how we'll collect feedback on how it goes. And I also wanted to ask, because I may have missed it in this hot, hot room, and I do apologize if you said it already, do you know how many people you expect to attend on Thursday?
We don't yet have, we didn't require folks to, well, let me say this, let me back up.
Yeah.
We worked really hard to remove any barriers from folks attending. So we didn't require people to submit a request to participate. We didn't ask that anyone lets us know ahead of time if they want to, if they want to register, it's available. We've been watching people looking. We are not a big draw, just to keep expectations. I would imagine we'll probably end up with 10 to 15 participants is where I think that will, will end. When we were strictly remote, we were able to hit kind of the 30 mark, but sort of, when you get a little bit more hybrid, it becomes to be, it gets a little bit more challenging. So we'll see how it goes. If it feels like we need to do something that's totally remote, we'll do that as well. Plans are to come back to you in August and give you a full debrief of where we, where we were, what we talked about, and where we landed.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
We'll move on.
And Haritha?
All right. On is off, I guess. Okay. Hi, Haritha Nara, Finance Manager. Thanks, Kelly and Jan. As Kelly mentioned, the results teams kind of play a very vital role for our budget development and the success of our budget process. So Staff Results Team is one of them. So Staff Results Team this time, similar to last time, we have, it consists of one representative from each department, who is the Deputy Director from each department. We, they, we expect them during this process, we expect them to kind of wear a community hat, community members' hat, and think like a community member. They'll provide us like a comprehensive or a strategic view of the city operations. They'll help us assess the budget's impacts on the services that we are providing to the community. So we have scheduled two and a half days of workshops with the staff members from tomorrow to Friday afternoon. And we're going to go through all the service enhancements, and we're expected that Financial Planning Team is facilitating the whole meeting. And there, the Staff Results Team members are expected to kind of review all the enhancements, have this, community members look to these items, and discuss, provide feedback, provide, share concerns, and provide any alternative solutions to those concerns. They are expected to rank, we are providing a template or a tool, lack of a better word, to rank each enhancements based on, at a priority level. We, after two and a half days, we are putting together a comprehensive list of these enhancements and ranking, and the notes that we're going to take from these meetings, and we will provide these to, we will report it out to the directors, which will be very used and valued during our discussions, during our budget balancing meetings, which are coming up soon as well. That's all I have to share. If you guys have any more additional questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions from council? I think we're good. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll take this opportunity to introduce Haritha as our new Finance Deputy Director.
Yay.
Thank you. Really, thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to work with you guys more than I do right now. Really fortunate to get this opportunity and confidence in me. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to add my two cents on that. I think this is awesome. And I have to say that during my interviewing process, I had a chance to meet Haritha, and she asked very tough and thoughtful questions, so she kept me on my toes. So I have no doubt that she's going to be an awesome deputy.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. So moving on to...
The last two items that I have are related to the CFD. Last week at our CFD meeting, it was brought to our attention that Marsha Jones is coming off, and we are replacing her with Mike Ben. In looking at these, the CFDs and the supervisors that are appointed, our city clerk helped me put together documents that will not only appoint Mike Ben, but also take care of appointments that are expiring in 2024, and take them to their third year. So that will include Don Marcy and Councilmember Salahuddin for CFD 201401, and Councilmember Kritzer and Councilmember Stewart for 201601. So if there's no objections, I'd like to add this to consent on July 16th, so that we can add a new supervisor for our August CFD meeting.
I see thumbs, and I see no hands. So that means yes.
Right. We will see you this evening. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, council. With that, we are, is there anything else? We are adjourned.